So, good evening. Welcome to Board of Trustees Pasadena Area Community College District Regular Meeting Number 22. It is Wednesday, July the 21st in the year 2010. And would you please take the roll?
Speaker.
Present.
President.
Here.
Speaker.
Here.
Speaker.
Dr. Menon.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
President.
I have not received cards for comments on closed-session items. So, we are about to move into closed session. We will be discussing Government Code 54957, Employee Discipline Dismissal and Release. We will be discussing Government Code 54957.6, Labor Negotiations. And we will be discussing Government Code 54962, Education Code.
Yes, and President Bradbury Huang, with respect to Government Code 54957, we are going to remove Item 12P, please.
Very good. The action was to deny the student grade appeal. So, that was Government Code 54962. Thank you. And now, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And seeing my little girl in the audience, I'm going to invite her up and ask her to lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible)
Well, actually, we have one, and then the other will be held over for consent items. Non-agenda items, I would invite Cameron White to come to the podium. Good evening, Mr. White.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to speak really quick tonight on behalf of the Veterans PCC today in regards to the information that was presented to the board. This was back, this is a month ago, the June 16th meeting. You might recall that members of the PCC veterans, mainly from our club, came here, and we communicated to the Board of Trustees information about Dr. Wilcox and the comments that he had made towards veterans, comparing them to gang-bangers and criminals. We dispersed the email that we had sent. There was introduced a vote of no confidence. And to this date, we have yet to receive any response from anybody sitting at any of these tables, which I think indicates to the veterans' population that really nobody sitting at any of these tables really cares. And in fact, that many of you may have supported those comments that were made, because none of you have stated otherwise. So, to that effect, I'd like to reiterate that the veterans of PCC have indicated that we have had problems and that we would like somebody to take action on that. And we were hoping that this is not going to come in the form of lip service, because, you know, we hope that people will hold Vice Presidents to a higher standards of ethical and moral behavior here at PCC to set a precedence for everyone that works at this college, on what is acceptable and what is not acceptable to say about students that attend a school here. And that's not just, you know, a small group of students. The veterans comprise about 700 students here. So, you know, we're somewhat of a large group. And, you know, we don't take kindly to comments that are made about us in a disrespectful manner. And I don't think anybody of any particular persuasion at this school would. So, frankly, the veterans would like a response from somebody sitting at this table about what's going to be done. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. White. Firstly, your comments are obviously very important to us, so thank you for coming back. They haven't landed on deaf ears. I know that Dr. Rocha would like to offer at least a response right now, but as you know, having not been put on our agenda, we can't get into any kind of meaningful discussion. But we want you at least to know that your comments have indeed been heard.
Yes, thank you, President Bradbury Huang. First of all, Mr. White, thank you for your comments. I take them quite seriously. My father's a veteran, and my son is in the Naval ROTC. So, the veterans and their interests are not something that's simply academic to me. I'm aware of the situation that you've raised. I did meet today on this very issue with representatives of the Veterans Club. I think, forgive me for not knowing the last names, but Carolyn and Magdalene, okay? We had a very frank discussion. I reviewed the policy for adjudicating such a matter, and there is a policy. I'm not sure, you know, I need to get the backstory. So, I'm going, I promised that I would take it up and report back so that we can adjudicate this particular grievance.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Martin.
It appears to me that we have a process at the college for students or anyone who has a complaint to follow a process. And I'm guessing, without knowing it exactly here, in this particular issue, that that process doesn't usually begin by people just standing up at a Board of Trustees meeting, but there's probably some official form that somebody fills out so that the details can be known and an investigation can begin at the appropriate level. So, I would suggest to all who are here, listening and watching, that there is a process, that the process, to my understanding, has always been followed very carefully and very seriously, and that they ought to be given direction for how to start that process so that it can be a complete investigation. Because if everything was just standing up and everybody in the community standing up making a comment, we would be chasing our tails immensely. We need people to follow the process so that it can be done appropriately, at the depth and the level with the facts that are important and necessary to come to the best conclusion that can be reached.
Very good. So, if I may, actually, I'm going to change the spirit and the tenor of the conversation. I want to make some announcements by way of introduction. First, we have in the audience with us a Mr. Scott Feldman. If you'd be so kind, Scott, to come on up to the podium. Scott has his own board meeting to get to fairly soon, so I'm delighted that you could take some time. Scott's bio, perhaps the best-written bio I've ever seen, actually, is in our packet, because Scott is a nominee for the Measure P Committee in the category of small-business owner, and as Director of the Chamber of Commerce in South Pass, very much has the ear of small business. But I happen to be delighted that you're here this evening as well, because we're about to break in a moment for a little cake and coffee. And I would love to introduce you to folks on the board. Scott is a great organizer, seems to know how to get people together to get the right things to happen. And I think you'd be a great person to know from the board member's perspective in light of what's going on in Area 5. So, thank you, Scotch. Do you want to offer?
Thank you very much. Well, I'm honored and delighted to be able to serve on the committee. I am totally impressed with the quality of education offered by PCC, and in particular, the way that the board and the leadership of PCC reaches out to include the input from the local community members and organizations of the communities that it serves. And I've had a great experience with many of your staff members and with Dr. Bradbury Huang over a long period of time to be able to justify that statement. So, thank you very much for this, and I look forward to getting to know you more and to assisting you in your goals on the Measure P oversight.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you. Trustee Baum, you also have a nominee present.
Yes, I want to put him on the spot. I'd like to call Kevin Stroats to the podium, please. Kevin Stroats is the nominee for the local taxpayer representative. I've known Kevin for about 15 years. He has held an MBA from Claremont and is a community college alumnus from Chaffey College and has been a successful finance executive in for-profit industries, and is a resident of Altadena, and is very devoted to community college and community college instruction as a product of community college education. And I'm very pleased that he's willing to take this on.
Welcome. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Would you wish to offer some comments? Not that you have to.
That's, I wasn't expecting to, but I definitely will. I have several years' worth of strategic planning background with different companies in Southern California, one of them being Universal Studios, The Disney Company, and in consulting as well. And...
And Kevin has a better half. His spouse, Julia McCallum, was a member of the search committee and is the Vice President for Human Resources at Caltech.
Yes. And I was also involved with the development of the second half of CityWalk while I was at Universal.
Wonderful.
So, I have some construction experience.
Welcome to you, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Very good. In addition, I want to make note of what is obviously a number of transitions that are happening here on the board tonight. There's the transition of the furniture, yeah. That's important, and the fact that we're now even more mediated than we were before. But probably the most important transition is we welcome particularly President Mark Rocha. Clearly, this is not the first time we've welcomed you, but it is the first time we welcome you as Secretary to the Board. So, that's the special position that the President takes vis-à-vis the board itself. We do also know that there will be at least one big old bash down the road, maybe in some months to come, with the external community and the foundation and so on. So, this is by no means neither the first nor the only welcome to you. But obviously, a Secretary to the Board, we're delighted that you're here. And...
Well, thank you very much, Madam President and trustees. I deeply thank you for the confidence that you place with me. And I also want to thank all of the faculty, staff, and students that I've met so far here at Pasadena City College for making me feel at home. Indeed, after only three weeks, I feel like I am home and that we've already made a great deal of progress. One thing that I did want to say with all my heart is to express my gratitude to my colleague, Lisa Sugimoto, for her extraordinary service as President. Lisa has been extraordinarily generous with her time and her wisdom in terms of making the transition smooth. I was acquainted with Lisa before, and I can say in a very short time that we've become good friends and colleagues. I have, we are talking about, she is an important member of the team, and talking about and hoping that I will be able to continue to rely, then college will be able to continue to rely on her contribution. So, that was the most important thing. I want to thank everybody, and thank Lisa, please.[796.23][796.23](applause)
Mr. Nolan.
If I may, while we're on introductions, we have the new Associated Students Board here, so if I can briefly introduce them.
Please.
So, from, well, first here, sitting with us for this meeting, some of you have met her, some of you have not, Jamie Hammond. She's the President of Associated Students for 2010-2011. Also, if you all would be so kind as to stand, we have the rest of the Executive Board sitting up there. From our right up here is Joseph Garcia. He is the Vice President for Campus Activities. Samantha Yu, she is the Vice President for Business Affairs. Ashley Jackson, the Vice President for Cultural Diversity. Miltilda Restrepo, she is the Vice President for Student Services. Christian Espiritu, Vice President for Internal Affairs. Alexander Soto, Vice President for External Affairs. And Cameron White, Vice President for Academic Affairs. Unfortunately, some of our board members were not able to join us tonight. So, we're missing Chesley Pack, Vice President for Public Relations, and also Ahmad Casvi, who's in Lebanon, I believe. He'll be back shortly. He is our Chief Justice, as well as our Secretary, Chris Venessi.
Thank you for being here. Clearly, new things are afoot, and I would like to take a moment to let you know of some new things that are afoot for me, which in effect mean that I will be resigning from the Board effective tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. And the reason for that is my family who are here with me, we are moving to Portland, Oregon, and clearly out of Area 5. And that'll be a tough commute. In Portland, there is the Portland Community College called PCC, equally well-established up there, so I won't feel too very far away from home. I leave with a great sense of gratitude, I truly do, working with all of you. We say it over and over, but it's so true. You all care so much about PCC, and it's just an honor to work with people who have integrity and passion for what they do. So, I'll be remembered as I'll be remembered, probably as the jolly green sustainability person. I hardly talk about that issue. I don't even understand why people will remember me in that way. But I'll be remembered as you'll remember me. But know that I will remember all you very, very fondly, and email and cell phone number remains the same. So, if I can ever be of any service, please, please, please let me know. We're going to break, and...
Before we break.
Before we break, Trustee Baum.
Well, I just wanted to add my congratulations to you on this transition in your life. It has been a pleasure working with you over the past five years, and I appreciate the countless hours and always great wit and sense of humor that you brought to the meeting and good spirit. I always felt that you were an open-minded and earnest individual that cared deeply about the college and the community. And the communities of South Pasadena, San Marino, and Temple City have been fortunate to have your leadership on the board. And I actually, thinking about this, just prepared an Irish blessing for you that I wanted to share.
Thank you.
But, and I speak for myself, and I expect others do, but the Irish blessing for Hillary is, "May the road rise up to meet you. May the wind be always at your back, and may the warm rays of sun fall upon your home. And may the hand of a friend always be near. May green, especially for you, be the grass you walk on. May blue be the skies above you. May pure be the joys that surround you. And may true be the hearts that love you." So, thank you very much for being a tremendous colleague these past five years.
You're precious. You're very kind.[1043.13][1043.13](applause)
Let me add to that, if I may, before we take the break and take a bit of personal privilege here. First of all, I'm not sure we should accept your resignation.[1058.24][1058.24](laughter) I think Portland is going to be the winner of this, and we ought to just keep you here. But be that as it may, it really has been a pleasure working with you these past number of months. And I don't say that just because you're Hillary and I'm Bill, but I think you've done a really good job in terms of our leading the effort to find a new President Superintendent. It's been a real pleasure working with you on that, and you will be very, very badly missed. So, come back anytime. We'd love to have you, and we send you off with our very, very best wishes. And I think we're now going to take a break and do a little celebrating.
Thank you, Bill.
If I may, Bill, since we all get our turn.
Okay.
We don't have to.[1109.61][1109.61](laughter)
I want to thank you especially for your leadership in this last presidential search. It took a tremendous amount of your time and effort. It took a tremendous amount of leadership. There are just things that happen in any endeavor of that magnitude where somebody has to bridge the gap, and you did it. And the college and this district and thousands of students will be better because you did. And I want to thank you on their behalf.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Anybody else have comments? Selinda?
Hillary, I just want to wish you all the best, you and your family and your new job. I'm sure before you know it, you'll be back in someone's school or doing something for the community, because that's what you're all about. And we appreciate you for your love and compassion and your dedication for student success.
Jeanette?
Yeah, I also want to thank Hillary for her leadership as President, and also for during the past years, how she has taken the whole issue of sustainability and put it front and central here at the college. And I think you can see that on the campus. I think you can see this in the, when the new buildings, when they are there. And I think that a few times Hillary and I have not agreed on things. But I got a little email from Hillary inviting me to have coffee today, but we had frozen yogurt instead, which is much better. And I think part of it is we are both strong, hard-headed, want to have our own way. But we have agreed that...
I won't agree with that, Jeanette.[1215.58][1215.58](laughter)
I think we both are most concerned about the students at PCC.
Don't talk to my husband, Jeanette.
And I saw him smile, and the little girl smiled too. I think we're both committed to the students at PCC, and we're really going to miss you, Hillary.
Thank you, Jeanette. Thank you.
Nolan?
Well, it is left to the new Secretary of the Board. No one leaves empty-handed. So, I ask you to please rise, President Bradbury Huang. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we present this gavel, so you can bang it up in Oregon, with deep appreciation, to Hillary Bradbury Huang, President, Board of Trustees, Pasadena Area Community College District, 2009-2010.
I'm honored. Thank you.[1259.33][1259.33](applause)
I think Mr. Pack has something he wants to say, and then we will take a break.
We have parting gifts.
Oh, beautiful.
And as a memorial and something that you can put in your new office, just a collage of great moments in your service to the college, so, for you.
Thank you.[1286.24][1286.24](applause)
Nolan?
So, I know everybody's waiting for the cake that's sitting back there. I'll make my comments brief. But I've had the distinct privilege of working with Dr. Bradbury Huang on the shared governance sustainability. We worked a lot together on a sort of sustainability policies. And I've always really appreciated her guidance and wisdom in the area of sustainability, which is an issue that's near and dear to both of our hearts. So, I am very sad to see her go, but at the same time, very thrilled that she's moving on to an exciting new chapter in her life. And I am interested in seeing how the appointment process goes. And I can say, even if we were to get a truly stellar candidate to fill your spot, you will be sorely missed in the PCC community.
Thank you. Speaking of cake, I noticed these beautiful cakes down the back. And if Chef Tai Yu is around, is he? I want to say, "Gochisou samadishita." They're particularly beautiful cakes. So, let's go eat some cake.[1349.24][1349.24](applause)
And come back to the mundane business we have in front of us for the rest of the evening. We have a presentation to be made. Julianne, from Assembly Member Anthony Portantino's office.
Good evening. Welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for having me here tonight and for granting me a few moments of your time. I bring greetings from Assembly Member Anthony Portantino, and he has asked me to come here tonight to commend our good friend, Dr. Lisa Sugimoto, on her tenure as the President of PCC. And I've brought a little goodie here from the California State Legislature. I have a resolution that has been provided by Assembly Member Portantino and Senator Carol Liu. And if Lisa would come up, I would like to present this to her. There's a lot of whereas's, because she's done a lot of good stuff, but I'm going to just kind of condense it. And would like to say, you know, there's, sometimes in history, we have these synergistic moments where things, certain things happen at a certain time for a certain reason. And I truly believe that Lisa, being here at the time she was and having stepped in and provided leadership to PCC at the time that she did, really was just one of those kind of magical things that happen in life. And on behalf of the Assembly Member and the Senator, I would like to commend you and thank you so much for your leadership of PCC and offer this resolution to you. I'm going to take two seconds of personal time to say, as a woman of Japanese-American descent, I just want to say what a great role model you have been for me, and I just thank you so much for your leadership and your example and your friendship.[1480.11][1480.11](applause)
Thank you.[1482.11][1482.11](laughter)
Well-deserved. Let's come back now to our agenda. Are there other introductions or announcements by any member of the Board of Trustees? Trustee Brown?
Announcements? Oh, sure. Well, I would like to report my report. That's what you want?
The reports are on my...
This is an announcement.
Introductions, announcements right now. We'll get to reports in a few moments.
I have no announcements.
Okay, trustee Mann?
No, I have none.
Trustee Baum?
None for me.
Trustee Martin?
None, thank you.
Trustee Pack?
Just one announcement. The Associated Students, as some of you may or may not know, passed an amendment to the Constitution to create a Vice President for Sustainability within the Executive Board of AS. And we've had applications for that position open for the past couple of weeks, and they'll be closing this Friday. So, hopefully, we'll have more news for you once we have that position filled.
Good. Thank you very much. Let's move on in the agenda. I'm going to, if I may, go directly to Item H. I think our legal counsel has some other matters she'd like to be able to attend to this evening, and so perhaps we can take the question of the appointment, election of a trustee, Area 5 discussion with possible action. And I would say that this afternoon, I did put together a draft just to help our discussion this evening of potential schedule and ways to go. We've got essentially two ways that we can do. We can either make an appointment, or we can order an election. We have 60 days to take action in, which gives us a deadline of September 22nd, 2010. So, Mary Dowell?
Thank you very much. Mr. Thompson, members of the board, Dr. Rocha. Mr. Thompson has very accurately described the requirements that are set out in the California Education Code. When a vacancy occurs on a community college district, Board of Trustees and the Board's own Bylaws 1020 also track the requirements of the Education Code. The code requires that the Board first make a decision whether it is going to proceed with an election to fill the unexpired term or to make an appointment. Once the Board has made that decision, then certain other decisions will need to be made going forward. If the Board were to choose to request an election, then there would be discussions that would need to occur with the County Registrar and the County Superintendent of Schools. If the Board determines that it is going to make an appointment, then by at least the next board meeting, we would hope that the Board would have before it a process that it would go through in order to select a candidate to fill the unexpired term created by the vacancy, so that somebody can, so that a provisional appointment can be made, as Mr. Thompson indicated, by September 22nd. This is a hard and fast 60-day requirement. It cannot be extended. If the Board does not make a decision whether to hold an election or to appoint someone to fill the unexpired term, then the County Superintendent of Schools must order an election. So, the Board has 60 days in which to act before it loses control of the circumstances surrounding it. And so, the action item before you tonight is to make the selection, whether to call an election or to engage in a selection process yourselves. That's the only action that is before you tonight. If you choose to fill it by a selection process, then I'm happy to work with the Board Officers and with Dr. Rocha to present a possible process for selection that the Board can adopt and get this moving, because it is a tight timeline, and it has to be done within that timeline.
Are there questions of Ms. Dowell? Mr. Baum?
So, what type of action would we take? Do we actually have to make a motion in a second and vote to, or is there a resolution? If we decided to do an election, would we actually have to vote a resolution declaring an election? Or if we chose for appoint, to proceed with an appointment to the Board, do we make a resolution, or is it just simply a motion?
It's a motion, second, and vote.
Right.
You do not need a formal resolution.
So, then, that's helpful, too. So, I would say just looking at that issue separately, in a perfect world, I would prefer to have the people of the district... I would prefer to have the people of the district select their representative to this Board. I think that is, in all cases, I would rather defer to the voters in that district. Given the timing, though, and given the budget situation, and giving the amount of time on the unexpired term, I think it would be worth considering an appointment to the Board. And would that appointment be for, until the next, the entire unexpired term, or would it be to the next election?
Is to the next regularly scheduled election for this Board. And if the term does not expire at that time, then the person running would run for the balance of the unexpired term.
So the next regularly scheduled election for this Board is when seats 2, 4, and 6 are up, which would be November 2011?
That's correct.
And that, and this, if we chose the appointment route, that person would serve until that time, and there would be an elec... They would be part of that election cycle?
Then there would be an election. That's correct. They could run for it or not run for it.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, the only thing that I, a question I have is, why tonight are we limited to deciding if we want to have an election or an appointment? If we decide to have an appointment, why do we have to wait two weeks to, I mean, for example, the California Community College League has a very clear document that scales it out step by step. Why couldn't we just say, if we want to have an appointment, we'll just follow this process? Why do we have to wait two weeks and have you develop a process?
Oh, you don't have to have me develop a process if, and if the Board, for example, if the Board Officers and Dr. Rocha say that, you know, the CCLC process, or, and I believe actually they give you some options, we like option one, I would expect them to present that to you. And I, and...
And it doesn't have to be the Board Officers. It could be a committee of the Board.
It could be a committee of the Board, whatever, but the point is that what is before you tonight was first, the first decision the Board had to make was whether to call an election or to appoint, and that's the item that's before you tonight.
Oh, I see. It says election. Right. Okay, got it.
Are there questions? Mr. Pack?
Just so that I can be clear on how the appointment process would or could work, if we opt for the appointment, where do the candidates come from? Obviously, from District 5, but how do we create a candidate pool for the appointment?
That's exactly what the process would be designed to do, and you are correct. They have to come from District 5, because trustees in this district are not elected either at large nor run at large. It will have to be someone who is a resident, not only of the district, but of District 5. And the Board, and as Dr. Mann has mentioned, there are a couple of different ways you can go about doing a selection, but generally, the, what I've seen with different districts that I've worked with who are filling a vacancy, it certainly starts with an immediate publication of the vacancy and an invitation to persons who are interested to submit their name as a potential nominee. And then, it can go forward similar to a selection process for unemployment, or I have seen boards that simply allow all persons who are interested to come to a public meeting of the Board and make a presentation. So there are different ways that you can go about it, and a lot of it depends on how many people are expressing an interest, how large the territory is that you'd be pulling them from.
Thank you for that clarification.
The league booklet, I believe, goes into a fairly detailed suggested process to be followed if we want to make an appointment, and it suggests allowing the first four weeks of the two months, basically, to look for would-be candidates, to encourage them to apply. We have to come up with a procedure to be followed typically. Again, they recommend an application form and a letter of interest with a description of qualifications, experience. A questionnaire can be used if we desire to do that. Obviously, you want the resume and some references in connection with the person who applies. Then they suggest weeks 5 and 6, look over the applications, perhaps check references. The following week, maybe public interviews at a specially called Board Meeting, something like that. And then finally, at a public meeting, make the decision and make the announcement of the person. So, the first question we have to decide this evening is, do we want to have an election, or do we want to do the appointment process? Trustee Brown?
Well, given the economic climate, I think it will be conducive for us to consider having an appointment. Not only is it going to be good financially for the school, but the person nominated and appointed will have the opportunity to fill out the Board and get some experience, and then, when the time comes, to rondo beside of the one one. So that would be my opinion.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Mr. Baum?
So, the point I'd like to make, too, is if we choose the route of appointment, I want to put on the table right now, I want this to be as public and transparent a process as possible, and as much as possible done as a committee of the whole in public session, as opposed to delegating a significant portion of this work to a committee. I would like to see the, and we will get to the procedures if the motion passes, but as much is done in an open, transparent way, so that everybody can see how the Board made its decision and the process that was followed. So I would encourage that, that means we all have to be prepared to be flexible with our schedules in the next 60 days, to be able to convene as a committee of the whole as we take this responsibility on.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, I would like to speak in favor of the motion, and I would strongly like to support what Mr. Baum said. Would I ask also if Dr. Van Pelt could tell us how much, we have been looking at this in Budget Committee, how much would an election probably cost, on your best estimate?
We're estimating between a quarter million and $300,000.
So we're not talking about insignificant amount of money for our, you know, for the audience. It's between a quarter of a million and $300,000, and there will be an election in just a little over, over a year. The other thing I would like to suggest, though, if we possibly could, is some kind, well, first of all, I think we might want to put an immediate announcement on our website that, you know, there is a vacancy and contact, like we did with the President. If you remember, we put that up immediately and had people apply. And then, thirdly, I would like for us to discuss a little bit about what Board members should do who are already being lobbied. Is it appropriate to, you know, to meet with people? How is the best way to go? That's my position on the motion and my concerns.
Other comments or questions about the motion? You ready for Mr. Pack?
Yeah, I'll just sort of echo that sentiment and say that while I recognize that this is an important position and don't take it lightly, I really think that $300,000 is a lot of money to spend at this time, and so from a student perspective, given the limited resources of the college and limited availability of budget for classes, it's probably the most fiscally prudent thing to do, since we're going to have an election in the next year, at least from a student perspective, probably to do an appointment.
Are there comments or questions? Ready for a vote of the motion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Motion carries unanimously.
I'd like to make a follow-up motion.
Sure.
So now that we've chosen that direction, I would like to direct, make a motion to ask the administration to then follow the, staff this appointment process, following the guidelines laid out by the California Community College League as best practices, and then present to the Board at the appropriate time, decision make, the decisions that need to be made with respect to the application, the advertising, the outreach, and things like that. So that may mean that at the next meeting, we will have to approve things like that, but I think that would be better done as a committee of the whole at the next meeting, but that the administration could get started on that process and staffing the Board that way.
If I may, Mr. Thompson, I don't think you need a motion to do that. I think that can be expressed as, you know, that will be the next step. That is what's going to happen.
Are there comments or questions on this topic? Okay, I think we are in agreement that we want the process to be transparent. We want people to be aware of the vacancy, and if you live in District 5 and feel that you are qualified, you certainly may apply, and we will put together as quickly as we can. First of all, I do agree that it ought to go on the website, if not tomorrow, as soon as we possibly can get it there, and make people aware of it, and that, let them know that they can apply. We also need to ask the administration to come back to us with a recommended schedule and a recommended process, including the items to be done and the dates by which they are to be accomplished. One question I would have is, do we want to wait until the 4th of August, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting, to set this? If we do that, that's going to push us a little bit at the end of the process, since the 22nd of September is our deadline, and the Board meeting we have is on the 15th of September, and I think ideally, we'd like to be in a position to address this issue, make a selection and announcement at that meeting. So, what are your druthers? Do you want to do a special meeting, or do you want to wait until the 4th of August and squeeze all this in? Mr. Baum?
My understanding is that an application instrument needs to be prepared. A public announcement needs to be prepared. Now, that we could do it like we did the presidential search process, where we say, "A job description's coming," but just know that we're planning that, and that was on the website. I would be available to meet next week if necessary, if the administration can pull things together on that.
Dr. Rocha?
Yes, well, first, I'm happy to work on the operational plan for the nomination, selection process. Let me ask General Counsel, based on your experience, how long would it take the administration working with you to develop an operational plan the way the trustees are instructing us?
I think if we use the Community College League model, that it will not take more than a week to 10 days.
Okay. So we could meet next week sometime?
I think that's very doable.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Do you want to, do we want to have a special meeting, next Wednesday evening or next Thursday evening?
Can you explain the, I didn't quite understand the timing problems if we waited till our next meeting on the 4th. Where on the, I'm looking at the calendar, I think, that was presented.
Well, it just means everything gets moved back from the 22nd of July, rather, excuse me, to August the 4th, and then we had moved the August 20th date back two weeks, and, which takes us into the early part of September, which conflicts with Labor Day, and those are the practical issues that I see.
Well, do, when you say conflicts with Labor Day, so there's, do we not have regular meetings on the 1st and 15th of September?
We have a meeting on the 4th of August.
Yeah, but I'm saying, he said...
September.
Oh, right. Right, we have a meeting on the 1st and the 15th.
So, week 1 through 4 now starts 8:4 instead of 7:22.
And we may only need a three-week window for people to apply, as opposed to a four-week window for people to apply.
Well, I think we'd be better off giving people more time rather than less time. So if we're going to squeeze somebody, I think we ought to be the ones to suffer that as opposed to the public who may want to apply.
Using trustee Baum's approach, which is what we do with the superintendent, there's no reason people can't start applying almost immediately, is there not? I mean, announcements can go out, all that stuff can start happening.
But if we're going to put together a questionnaire and an application form and the requirements that the candidates are to submit when they apply, that has to be known before they do so.
And if I may, Mr. Martin, I mean, one of the things that the Board needs to decide is how many components of that recommended process, do you want to do a questionnaire, or do you not want to do a questionnaire? What, you know, do you want an essay? Are you going to have an ad hoc committee or not have an ad hoc committee? There are a lot of components to the process that the Board will receive recommendations on and need to act on. There is no statutorily required process, and all this, although this very often does look like an employment process, it is not one. You are not hiring someone, and the transparency that trustee Baum is talking about is very important.
So, an option would be, I mean, we could even decide tonight to accelerate that process and say, "All we're going to need is a cover letter and a resume directed to the superintendent president," and then do away with an application instrument. I'm not saying we are doing that, but we could do that if we wanted to.
Well, I think Counsel is telling us we cannot do that.
You could do that, but you can't make that decision tonight. That's not before you.
It's not on our agenda. The only thing on our agenda is the election.
Oh, okay.
Not the process.
So we really have to wait, August 4th is the earliest currently, unless we have a special meeting.
Unless you have a special meeting.
I'm okay to wait till August 4th, though. I think we could still achieve the process and do it on, by October.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, I think we can extend the recruitment period, because we have two weeks here to review the applications.
Right.
And I, you know, we had, what, 60 or 70 applications for the President, and I don't think it took people two weeks. I mean, I think we can review these applications. You can do a lot in a day. So, if people just set their mind up to it. So I think we can slip it, there's this place for the slippage. Although, I don't think we can slip at the end. We can slip the reviews.
Problem may be for those who have day jobs, can't...
Well, there is Saturday and Sunday. Those are both days.
That is very true. Sometimes our jobs fall over into Saturdays and Sundays as well, so...
Well, maybe we should have an ad hoc committee of people who don't have day jobs. That would really limit this group.
Well, what's your pleasure? Is there a motion for a special meeting? If not, we're, we'll take this up on the 4th of August.
I suggest we give the administration and Counsel two weeks to actually pull all this together. And in the words of our CEO, "Make it soup and bring it to us." I appreciate it.
All right, the 4th of August is when we will take this up, but we are going to make an appointment. We will not have an election, and we will put something on the website as quickly as we can, advertising the position, and encouraging people to begin giving consideration to applying for the spot. Anything else on this topic?
If I could ask a question of Counsel, I still am, I still am concerned about, and I think I know the answer, I've read the league book very carefully, but I am being lobbied, and I assume everyone else will be. It seems to me like now that this is, oh, that we have decided the process we're going to use, the appropriate thing is to simply, just to refer people to the superintendent president.
I think the appropriate thing for Board members to do if they are approached by potential candidates or advocates on behalf of potential candidates, is to refer them to the superintendent president's office, to assure them that there will be an application process, that the Board is interested in looking at any likely candidates. But what, I know it goes without saying, Board members need to be very careful about doing at this point, is saying anything to any candidate that suggests that you will support them when they come before you.
And my just hope is that at some point, the superintendent president would actually make himself available for a public meeting, as often during the election cycle, to interested candidates, to brief them on issues before the college.
Right, so noted.
Could be a part of the process that they come back with. Anything else on this? Okay, may move back then, and while Counsel is here, then we'll be able to bid her farewell for the evening. The items D and E and F, the organizational meeting, and I think, Mary, you may want to explain the significance of the wording of item E. There's election to fill Board of Trustees, officer vacancy, colon, discussion with possible action.
That's correct. This matter, that is item E, is before the Board tonight, because once Dr. Bradbury Wang announced, or her decision to leave the Board, and submitted her official notice of resignation from the Board to the County Superintendent of Schools' office, it was evident that the Board was going to experience, if I may, a double vacancy. Not only would it have a vacancy in her place on the Board, but there would be a vacancy in the office of President of the Board. The Board's bylaws provide both that when the President, if the President is absent for any reason, including resignation, that the Vice President of the Board shall act as the President of the Board, but also provide... as the president of the board, but also provide that when there is a vacancy on, in any board office, that then the board shall fill the vacancy of the majority, excuse me, fill the vacancy for the remainder of the term by a majority vote from among its members. So it was evident, as soon as Dr. Bradbury-Wang officially notified the county superintendent that she was leaving the board, that there would be a vacancy for an office of the board. And so the item before you tonight is for the board, if it chooses to do so tonight, to fill the vacancy created by her resignation from the presidency of the board. And that is the item that is before you.
Mr. Baum?
It's my understanding, the way it is agendized, though, however, if we are, if in filling one vacancy, we are not permitted, based on Brown Act, for filling additional vacancies.
This item, as written, permits the board to fill the vacancy that was clear would occur and now has occurred. It is not sufficiently broadly framed to allow the board to fill more than one officer vacancy tonight. The public has not been notified that there might be that kind of reshuffling of the board.
And our bylaws also allow for the vice president to assume the presidency in the absence of a president, or to act as president.
They are to, the vice president is to act and perform the duties of the president. Act as and perform the duties of the president.
Right, so in essence, because I will express a preference that I believe if we are, and I also believe that we, in our organizational meeting, we often appoint the president of the college as the board secretary. I think that we should re-agendize this so that we can act on all the officers of the college, president, vice president, clerk, and secretary, at a future meeting. And since the president, the vice president is allowed to act in the role of president until a president is elected, that we're in good shape, and I don't recommend an action at this time.
Well, Mr. Baum, if I may, certainly the board can decide not to act on this tonight. That's clearly within the purview of the board. The board has its organizational meeting at the beginning of each-
I understand.
-year, that is, in December, after the election.
Right, and this was improperly agendized when we had convene an organizational meeting. So we probably can clean this up and have the proper language and do it.
I would not recommend more than one organizational meeting in a fiscal year.
Right, so exactly. So we would be able to bring it back, agendize it, so that we can act on all the officers and give the board maximum flexibility.
Well, the board would only act on other officers if other vacancies were created.
Correct.
It would not be appropriate for the board to reshuffle its officers.
Correct.
Ms. Brown?
I have a question. So, are we not able to vote for the new president today?
You are able to vote for it tonight, if you choose to do so.
But then we wouldn't be able to fill the vice presidency today.
I understand that.
And I expressed my preference would be, if that were the case, I would prefer to be able to fill all the offices at once.
One comment you made with respect to Dr. Rocha and becoming the secretary, do we have to elect him, or do our bylaws provide that automatically he takes that position?
Mr. Thompson, I understand that it has been traditional at the organizational meeting of this board to include reelection of the superintendent president to the position of secretary. I do not know what the origin of that historical practice is. The board's bylaws specifically provide that the superintendent president shall serve as the secretary to the board. And it would require a suspension of your bylaws for the superintendent president not to be secretary to the board.
So he automatically takes that position without being officially elected?
In my view, that position is automatically assumed by whomever is the superintendent president of the board.
Other comments or questions? What are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes?
I'm not prepared to vote tonight. I had, you know, discussed this, and because we often have a practice of electing, of people kind of go, it's a practice, it is not a policy, people kind of moving up through the offices, I think we should just wait so that if we do elect, you know, if we do elect the vice president president, then there would be a vacancy, and we can then fill that vacancy. I'd like to do it all at one time rather than piecemeal it. So I'm perfectly confident that Mr. Thompson can be as good a president acting as he could be, assuming he would be who we would elect. We might decide to elect someone else. So I'm not ready to vote tonight.
Of course, the big benefit here is we save a lot of money on cake. Only need one.
Okay, then I guess we're moving on to the next agenda item. Reports by members of the board slash board subcommittees, superintendent president, and shared governance representatives. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, Trustee Thompson, I have a very, very brief report, but it is important. First of all, I did want to say, in terms of commending Lisa, that in addition to the commendations, we also have one here from Congressman Schiff and the Pasadena City Council that we'll be passing on to you. So that is, congratulations to you, and thanks again for all your help to me. Just a couple of things that I wanted to raise to the board's attention and to my colleagues' attention. First, you know, I have met, and I've had the opportunity to meet, not only with the executive committee, that has done great work in this transition, because it's actually a transition creates extra work. So I really do thank all the members of the executive committee for really kind of moving along pretty quickly here. Also met with representatives of the classified staff, who gave me a lapel pin. I want you to know that I accept all lapel pins and bling, and I'm putting on a hat that Joe gave me from the 2009 basketball champions, and that's in my office right now, and I thank the classified staff for that. I did want to report, though, and begin to mirror back to the trustees and to the community, what I call our Centers of Excellence. And I will be reporting consistently on what I call the Centers of Excellence of Pasadena. I have done quite a bit of touring and inspection. I won't go into a great deal of detail today, but for example, this morning, I had the opportunity to go out to our Community Education Center. And I can tell you that they're just doing wonderful work. And in fact, Dean Hodge is one of those who almost presented a program review to me today, and is going to have his program review ready for October 15th. This afternoon, I visited the Writing Center, and as an English teacher, it's something I know something about. Extraordinary Writing Center. I met with Dean Douglas, and showed me the whole building. It's kind of hot up on the roof that day, but I thought it was kind of hazing, but I got through it. But some of the things in the, for example, the geology program and some of the other programs, and all, I want you to know that all of our programs have these wonderful, I would call them common rooms, or study areas, where the students actually, you know, can come in, do their work, hang out, see faculty and staff, and so on. And the Learning Assistance Center, Stuart gave me a tour there, and just absolutely extraordinary. We're one of the few colleges to have something that's special. Met with Dean Olivo, and went over counseling, and showed me how their, how many students they're counseling at this particular period so efficiently, went through, talked to some of the students. So I just did want to, in my very brief report, report to you, later you'll hear a little bit more about our accreditation, but in my report, to let you know that the faculty and staff are doing extraordinary work on behalf of the mission and behalf of our students. So, thank you, Trustee Thompson.
Mr. Martin?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Beck?
This week, associated students started working with the Welcome Day Committee to contribute to and support our Welcome Day celebration, if you will, this year. And so we're looking to support that and hopefully shift to as few disposable items as we can manage in that set of festivities.
Ms. Brown?
On Tuesday the 13th, I attended District One meeting sponsored by Councilwoman Jackie Robinson, which was put in place to have a reception to introduce the new police of chief for Pasadena. So I was happy to attend that. And on Wednesday the 14th, I co-hosted a reception with a few community members to show off our president. So it was quite a nice event. A lot of the community members were able to interact with Dr. Rocha and tell him what they expect out of him, and he told them what he expected out of them. So it was quite of a night event, so that's my report.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, the All Saints Church City Conversations Dropout Prevention Committee met today, and the, at the suggestion and request of the Dropout Prevention Task Force for the school board, this group is working to form a dropout, they're not going to call it this, but a dropout resource center, where they would try to get the different organizations within the city and groups that are working with young people to try to prevent dropouts to convene and provide resources. PCC has been very involved with this body. Dean Chase has developed this very handsome brochure, I think many of you may have seen, and I'm sure wherever the center is and how it's involved, we would want to be there to try, because many of these young people who come will be people over 18 or 19, who really are not going back to high school, but who might be coming to the CEC or to, you know, to get a GED. And in fact, they kept asking me, "Oh, can't you just have this or the CEC?" And I said, "I don't think we have the space." And the other thing that I learned at this meeting is the school district is putting in an application for a very large grant from the government to address the whole issue of dropouts, and they're soliciting letters, and I get the information, Dr. Rocha, I will get that to you, because I'm sure you would be, want to be involved with this. I also heard from Alice Petrosian, who is the, I think, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. They're very, they hope that the new superintendent will be able to begin the work that we kind of had let, had to let kind of go on, maybe at recess for a while, in trying to bring to the district and the USD much closer together, and work on some more joint projects, which I know we're still doing, but I think we need some more meetings of the heads.
Mr. Baum?
First, I want to say I'm delighted to see the cameras from the Pasadena Community Access Corporation here, covering our board meeting. This is the first time I can recall that the PCC board meeting has received the coverage, and I'm looking forward to seeing how this one-year pilot project works. And I would ask the administration, once the content is available on the website, if they would share the link so that other board members would be able to evaluate it. First, this is the first meeting we've gathered. First and foremost, welcome to our president. We're delighted to have you onboard, but this is also the first meeting we've had since commencement. I need to underscore what a magnificent, magnificent day that was for this college and for the community. And we've seen some of the news coverage, but I want to extend my congratulations and thanks to all the staff members and the faculty and the administrators that made this a historic day for this institution. And so thank you to Lisa and to others, and it is indicative of the heritage of excellence that this institution is represented by. I was also delighted to run alongside our new CEO in the PCC 5K that took place a week and a half ago. And there was a rabbit that darted out in front of me and beat me to the finish line. His name was Sam Rocha. And he was quite a trooper, getting up very early on that day to run in the 5K. And it was a wonderful, wonderful experience, and the camaraderie among the faculty and staff was terrific to see there, and the community. And hats off to Israel Estrada, PCC alum, who made it happen. There was, I think, over 500 participants in that day. Lastly, in your packets, you'll see the agenda from the Board of Governors meeting that was concluded last week. It was an important meeting and some controversial items. First off, Chancellor Scott sends his warm regards, and he's looking forward to coming down and celebrating our new, with our new president, and participating in any public activity we have to welcome the new president. A couple of things I want to draw your attention to that was on the agenda. Number one, on the first day of the meeting, it's a two-day meeting, we approved hundreds of millions of dollars in capital outlay projects that will be in the pipeline, should the state of California pass another educational facilities bond. Unfortunately, there's nothing from PCC in that pipeline, and there's a specific framework by which the college could qualify for state support for capital projects. And I sent those guidelines to Dr. Rocha to see how, as we are going through the planning process, to create some projects that might be eligible for state funding. I was jealous to see that, for example, Glendale College has a $40 million building on the, for funding from the state on that, and Mount SAC has also a very generous building on the docket for approval if the state is to pass another bond. The Board of Governors is taking a hard look at accreditation. I know that will be an issue for us later. And the activity of the Foundation for California Community Colleges, I was very proud to see, whereas we weren't on the charts before, the chart that was passed out this time, PCC is in the top five colleges in meeting the challenge for the OSHA grant. And I want to thank Elaine Chapman and her leadership in positioning PCC for this very $50 million scholarship funding that will be made available to PCC students. And they, the foundation appreciates that as well. There was, there's a considerable concern, as the people around this table can understand, in leadership development among community college administration, and how can we get more leaders in the pipeline to take vice president and presidencies within the community college system, and how we can partner with the California State University system, and what kind of leadership development can be applied statewide, so that we're not always scrambling to find leaders. And then a lot talked about building leadership from within institutions and how the system can support that. There, of all things, Parsons Corporation came to present to the Board of Governors about a pre-apprenticeship program that they are making available to community colleges, and having paid internships on their various construction projects and offices. And given that they're headquartered here in Pasadena, I want to make sure that they deliver a similar presentation here to our college to make sure that we have students that are eligible to participate in their fully funded program. The last thing that is very controversial that's coming up, and a lot of resistance on either side, is the decision, the academic senate is playing a major role on the decision whether prerequisites can be imposed for certain courses in order to, as a tool for student success and enrollment management. And there are arguments on either side of it. Some people feel that content-based prerequisites can actually be a barrier to some populations for access to education. Others, the academic senate is taking the opinion that it is actually an important tool for success. We've had a first reading on that. It was a very heated discussion up there, and I know Mr. Martinez will probably be able to keep us apprised on how that should be. And I welcome any feedback from your perspective as to, because we as a board will be deciding whether we change policy, as there is. Lastly, there was a joint meeting, unprecedented, of the State Board of Education, and, which is the state body that governs the K through 12 program, and Ted Mitchell, who was our keynote speaker at the Pasadena Educational Foundation, chairs that board, and the Community College Board of Governors, in talking about career technical education and other programs that we can increase in assessments, or increase success for students migrating through the system. And I'm looking forward to continuing to model that at the state level, but also at our level, so that we can create that pipeline from K-12 to community colleges to four-year universities. And so hopefully, everybody's on board with that momentum. Thank you. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Engelinger, Dean Engelinger, any reports?
No.
Ms. Chapman?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Colras?
No.
Thank you. A few things to report. The Vice President for External Affairs, Alexander Soto, and I attended the first Region Seven meeting for the Student Senate of California Community Colleges last week. And we've since forged a partnership with the Associated Students Board from Glendale Community College, and so we'll be working with them throughout the year in, in regards to associated students business. Got a few things. We've, the, the collection of the student activity fee has been implemented and has begun to be collected, and so we'll see the, that fee materialize throughout the semester. We've begun exploring the possibility of a new student position in, in the AS as a, as a secretary for our inner club council, which is fairly exciting. And we have also begun to plan our first two events, our first two large-scale events for the year in addition to Welcome Day. So, we'll be, we've already started planning Welcome Week and Club Week, and we have a lot of great, great events planned for that as well. Thank you.
Sounds very exciting. Mr. Lindemann?
Classified Senate right now is in the process of electing new officers and that, so I have no report at this time.
Ms. Martinez, welcome.
Thank you. Just a brief update on the academic senate activities. There are no meetings of the senate board during the summer. Our next meeting will not be until September the thirteenth. We are right now planning our annual senate retreat for September the eleventh to plan goals for the year, consistent with the college's strategic goals. And representatives of the Associated Students, the Classified Senate, and the Management Association will be invited to participate as well. But during the summer, we continue to work with the Office of Educational Services and Ipro on the ACCJC recommendations, especially the formation of the Institutional Effectiveness Committee. We are also continuing to work with the, the leadership of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee to create a process for writing and planning the assessment of what we're referring to as mid-level program, SLOs, such as our relatively new AA majors and areas of emphasis. So, there is a lot of work going on in that, on those issues. And that I'm very happy to hear about, the prerequisite issue that has been very contentious in the statewide academic senate. And certainly, we would be very happy to work with Mr. Baum on those issues and, and have a thorough discussion about developments taking place in, in that area.
Dr. Douglas?
Thank you. I just, I'd like to report that the Management Association, at its June twenty-eighth meeting, elected three new representatives to the Board of Directors. Nick Mata from Student Learning Services, and he'll be serving as secretary. Al Hutchings from Facility Services, he'll be serving as vice president. And I was elected from the instructional managers to serve as president, so.
Congratulations. Dr. Stig Matheus?
Let me just quickly reflect back to Dr. Rocha, my thanks and my appreciation to you for your support and your kindness in the transition, and certainly the support of the executive team through the transition. So, thank you very much.
Dr. Wilcox?
No report.
Dr. Van Pelt?
One small item. After eighteen months, we finally have approval from the Division of the State Architect to build the Center for the Arts.
Yay.
So, today, we set out a pretty aggressive schedule to, to line up the bids, and so that the award of contract we're expecting for October the sixth for the Board of Trustees.
Okay. I should also report that with Dr. Van Pelt's good work, there's been arrangements worked out to utilize some of the spare water time in the pool by the Rose Pole Aquatics Center Water Polo Team, so thank you very much. Approval of the minutes, the meeting of June sixteenth, twenty-ten?
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion or changes, corrections? We ready for a vote? Mr. Pack, advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Approval, consent items. We have a request for a person to speak on, with respect to item sixteen P, so let me call upon that individual. And I'm going to try to pronounce the name. The person was kind enough to give some assistance in that respect. So, Martin Mahia? Okay. Did I come close?
That was very close, exactly. Yes, it's perfect, perfect.
Thank you.
Good evening, and I'm with the board. My name is Martin Mahia with California School Employees Association. And I'm here on behalf of Chapter seven, 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 who represents the classified employees. First and foremost, I just like to address to the item sixteen P, which I believe you took action in closed session this evening. With respect to that action, and without disclosing the name of the person involved, I would just like to call to your attention that this matter has been going on for quite several, you know, you know, months. And back in April twenty-eighth, this particular person had a SCLEA hearing or a pre-disciplinary hearing. And by provisions of the collective bargaining agreement, the, the administration is required and responsible to provide feedback and a response to the employee within ten days. Bear in mind that we're in July, and, you know, just a few days ago, the employee received a, well, communication via the chapter president, the chapter president of CSCE that they would be actually taking on your behalf. And obviously, that is a, you know, disregard of the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement. I heard this evening by Mr. John Martin, speaking of the procedures, you know, about addressing concerns, complaints, et cetera, and how serious it should be taking. And I think the, the CBA, it's no, no different. It's an extension of your policies. It's an extension of what the employees and the community colleges have negotiated, have negotiated and have abide by. So, with that respect, I think that is a, you know, an egregious disregard of the provisions of due process that are embedded in the collective bargaining agreement. The second concern that I have is that, you know, the information that you received today, and which causes you to take action on this matter, pretty much, you know, prejudiced is the employee. Because if the action that you've taken is to sever the employee from employment, it's, he has an appeal rights to a panel, but then the panel makes a recommendation back to you. However, today, we have already received information pertinent to the case, allegations, you know, that haven't been proven, and that in itself, you know, does not give the employee a fair shake as to the due process guarantee under the, the contract, your policies, and also under the law. So, that's the actions that I wanted to speak to you about. I certainly hope that you reconsider that action and allow the employee, you know, to at least continue his employment. And I think we're talking about not severing the, the employment at this point. Yeah, I think that's exactly what you heard, probably discussing closed session. There's another matter pending that hasn't concluded yet. And I think, taking that action is pretty much early. But most important, the process in the contract was not followed. The ten-day notice was actually due months ago to the employee as required by the CBA. Having said that, we will be at least, depending on what action is disclosed by you tonight, we will evaluate that and take proper action to protect the employee's rights.
May I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
With respect to that, or maybe Dr. Rocha is the one who ought to be asked the question. I mean, is there, have you submitted this information to the administration in some form that they know the details of what you're addressing and have the ability to give consideration to it?
Well, this is actually the, the first time we actually heard that the administration was responding to the meeting that we had back in April twenty-eighth. There was, I mean, the, the administration is at least responsible to provide findings of fact, findings of conclusions of what transpired during the SCLEA hearing or the pre-disciplinary hearing. And that is required to be, to be done within ten days after the meeting, you know, it's, it's done. The only information that we received was a, a letter indicating a summary of what was discussed, not any proposed action or not any proposed conclusions thereafter, I mean, from that meeting. So, the only notice we actually received is what's taking place before you today. And that is what's our concern and a little problematic for us.
Dr. Rocha?
Well, let me turn to Dean Engelinger, who, who handled the case, and I know did the SCLEA. Yes, we, we did deliver a intention to terminate with, with proposed charges. We did hold a SCLEA. We did respond to the results of the SCLEA, and we have brought to the board the recommendation of the district to the board. If the board acts on the recommendation, then we will notify the employee of the, of the action taken by the, by the board, all in accord with the contract provisions and under the supervision of our attorney.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay, are there consent items that many board member would like to have dealt with separately?
No. I have one. Six P.
Okay. Anyone else?
I had marked thirteen B.
Any others? I have just one question with respect to one B. And I may just go ahead and ask that. We have the American Bar Association listed, and are the organizations that we're applying for membership in. I don't quite understand that one. How does, since that's the National Bar Association organization, how do we qualify as organization or individuals for membership in that? Dr. Wilcox?
Our legal assisting program is accredited through the American Bar Association. So, I suspect that's the connection.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Mann?
Yes, on six P, I would like to note that Dean Don Paxton, Dean of Business and Computer Technologies, retiring after forty years of service. And I always like to point this out, how the number of loyal and hard-working employees we have and how much we appreciate them. And the fact that people stay for forty years, I think, tells us something about the college.
Mr. Baum?
And I also just acknowledging Don Paxton. Don, I believe, is twenty-one years, but Virginia day, don't.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I read it wrong? Sorry.
And then also, I wanted to acknowledge the new assignment for Dr. Lynn Wright, who will be taking on a, as a, an assignment as a statewide project director for the Basic Skills Initiative. And we're delighted that she's able to take on this, and it's a very important project for, for the state and for our district. I had also just wanted to note in, in thirteen B, just to express my gratitude for the administration, because as we all know, there are a number of major projects coming down the pipeline that we as a district are going to have to address. For example, how we're going to upgrade our technology, how we're going to upgrade our, our enterprise resource system, and that the, the administration is taking appropriate measures and, and, in setting aside funding so that when we're, we're ready, we will have the resources and won't be able to, won't be prevented from doing a, a major investment in, in the college's infrastructure, because we don't have the funding. So, I want to thank the administration for that leadership in, in planning and the budget.
I have one question with respect to item six B. This is with respect to a recommendation that we authorize instruction of certain documents. Is this being given to us with the advice of counsel?
Yes, and this follows the league policy.
Good, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Some.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Advisory vote, Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Others, favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, this brings us, I believe, to the budget update. I assume Dr. Van Pelt, Dr. Rocha?
Dr. Van Pelt?
Thank you. What's in your packet is a set of documents. The first one is the total compensation model draft again, the updated draft from July the sixteenth. And you'll start to notice that most of the red numbers, which are the best estimated, best estimates currently available, are being filled in. And in fact, just yesterday, we, we filled in the cash in lieu of benefits. The big uncertainty, of course, still lies with the state budget, and almost no progress has been made in the past few weeks on the state budget. So, it makes it somewhat difficult for us to wrap up these, the final numbers until we have some sense of where we're headed. Then the next document is a new one, which was shared with the Ad Hoc Budget Advisory Committee. And I think that just a couple points that would be important to, to recognize. The low-range number shows a hundred and fifty million dollar cut to the system. The high-range number shows a hundred and twenty million dollar addition to the state system. That is the range within which we've been advised we need to be looking at the budget development process. So, the lowest possible at the moment that they're contemplating is a hundred and fifty million dollar cut, and it goes up to a hundred and twenty million dollar addition. So, what we've done is we've presented three options essentially. One that covers the worst-case scenario, one that covers the best-case scenario, and then the proposed one, of course, would slide in between those. Now, when you see the changes to expenditures about a third of way down the page, structural deficit forward. Now, if you recall, last budget year was, was predicated on having in round numbers a hundred and eighteen million dollars in revenues, but also about three million dollars more than that, almost a hundred and twenty-one million dollars in expenditures. Therefore, if we're going to compare last year's budget with this year's budget, the first thing we have to do is correct that structural deficit, which is why all three columns have that two-point-eight million dollar structural deficit correction. You also see that the step column longevity has been included, and the newly funded or unfunded positions does have changes. So, the worst-case scenario that we're contemplating in the, in the low range is a cut of one-point-one million dollars in unfunded positions. And that goes to a high of a forty-one thousand dollar augmentation with a proposal of about a two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollar cut. Now, recognize that each one of the bottom columns comes up with, with a budget that is, that's balanced. You also see that in the first column, the worst-case scenario, what's contemplated is a two-point-six million dollar draw from reserves. However, for the high range, there is not, and the proposal has no draw on reserves either. So, there's, there's flexibility that is built into this overall framework in order to allow us to be able to respond to what we're contemplating might come down the pike once the budget is actually passed through the legislature and signed by the governor. So, we think that we've lined this up in order to, to be able to handle anything that comes our way. And then the, the last page deals with the, the Ad Hoc Budget Advisory Committee guiding principles and directions. And what we did is we added one other column, which is on the right, just to show progress on that, to show that we, the left-hand column shows that we adopted each one of those points. The right-hand column shows the status. So, anything with a green check mark means that we have in fact taken that into account. You'll see that there's one red one, which is awaiting action. That has to await the, the budget adoption at the state level, because we won't know what our workload is until the states have made that determination. So, if there are any questions, that's a, a brief overview, but we did go into this in some detail, the Budget Advisory Committee.
Are there questions of Dr. Van Pelt? To Rocha?
Just wondering, could you brief us on your sense of the deferral in the cash flow situation?
The deferral on the cash flow, we were told yesterday that the check is in the mail from the state controller. So, that, now, what precisely that means, we don't know. But it is sixteen million dollars that we're anticipating. They said that it has been released, check's in the mail, so. So sometimes the mail can be slow, but we do expect that certainly within the next few days. And if that happens, clearly, our cash flow position will be greatly enhanced.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Other questions? Dr. Mann?
Dr. Van Pelt, didn't we get a check of about that amount about this time last year, about mid-July? Didn't we want to get a check completely unexpected or at least unexpected by the Board? So this probably, the check probably really is in the mail.
Well, last year, I think about July the tenth, we got about twelve or thirteen million dollars. Yes, we did.
Mr. Baum?
I just want to raise a point, just coming, having come back from Sacramento, and I'm on the Budget Committee for the Board of Governors. Whereas I was optimistic a little bit a month ago, I'm very pessimistic right now in the, because there is no traction being gained or any progress being made on the budget. And the Democratic Caucus can't even get an alignment between the Senate and the Assembly. The sense is that there's not enough pain to force people into a budget. There was some hope when the governor threatened to cut everybody to minimum wage in the state employment. Now that that's off the table, and which would have been a terrible thing for state employees, however, it might have motivated the passage of a budget, there really is very little motivation this election year because the legislature can blame the governor, the gubernatorial candidates can blame the legislature, and they all seem to have some political interest in making this as prolonged an issue as possible. And I see our new VP for External Affairs for Student Affairs, and Jamie and Nolan, I'm hoping that the students get to an even higher level of activism because unfortunately, one of the things that's on the table is an extraordinary increase in student fees. And that money might not even get back to the individual districts, but it will certainly come out of the pocketbooks of our students who are already struggling in so many ways. So it's, as much as we can make our voices heard, we need to do that. But for our sake, I'm glad we've already approved our tax revenue anticipation notes, but I would not be surprised if this drags on well into the autumn.
Other comments or questions? Okay, let's move on to item M, Appointment to Measure P, Citizens Oversight Committee. Discussion with Possible Action. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
Any objection to the motion? If we're all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I want to acknowledge our one pointee who's still with us. Congratulations.
He should take a second piece of cake for staying this long.
Item M, Accreditation Update, Presentation and Follow-Up.
Yes, Trustee Thompson. In introducing Dean Miller, and he's done great work with staff over the last couple of weeks, and Crystal and everybody in the Office of Institutional Effectiveness, we actually have a very brief accreditation report, but it's an update of what you have in your agenda, as we were informed on July the second, I believe, that we were continued on warning from ACCJC. We have taken that quite seriously. I did want to say, before I introduce Bob, that I'm very grateful to Trustee Mann for coming out to the accreditation and Ed Master Plan Committee. And during the course of that meeting, Trustee Mann made an insightful and astute comment that the process was very strong heretofore, but it was primarily external. And what I think we've done together is to strengthen the internal process so that we'll have a successful report on October fifteenth and be able to bring to the Board a completed Ed Master Plan in December. So what I asked Dean Miller to present very briefly was the brief slides that we presented at the meeting that Trustee Mann attended yesterday.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. And I will make this brief. Upon Dr. Rocha's arrival, one of the first things that he wanted to talk about, obviously, was the accreditation issues and the educational master plan. And elements of this slide you've seen before, the EMP, the strategic planning, and the continuous cycle of improvement that you see there. But Dr. Rocha, when working with Dean Karros and myself, determined that it would be good for us to consider the addition of the mission of the institution at the top as the guiding principle, if you will. And for at least a couple of years now, the institution, starting with the Academic Senate and the Student Learning Outcomes Assessment Resource Center Group, or what we call SLOARC, has been talking about an institutional effectiveness committee. And then dating back to at least April of two thousand nine, a lot of members of the college and Dr. Jacobs and the Academic Support Office and other areas have been talking about this notion of an Office of Institutional Effectiveness. And bringing together what you see on the slide and also in your packets, the notion of bringing together all those things that impact the effectiveness of the institution. And as you see on that continuous cycle of improvement chart that we have there, institutional effectiveness is one of the key components. So specifically, there is a proposal that the college is considering now to institute an Office of Institutional Effectiveness and bring under it the functions of the new Institutional Effectiveness Committee, planning and accreditation activities, institutional research, organizational development, which is a lot of our professional development that occurs now in the Teaching and Learning Center and out of the Human Resources Office, and then a Center for Innovation and Student Success, which in effect is our Teaching and Learning Center, but augmented in significant ways. And there's a concept paper that is being worked on right now. We continue to work with the Academic Senate as we continue to flesh this out, and we will be presenting that with Dr. Rocha's help in the near future. Moving along, another thing that Dr. Rocha asked Dean Karros and I to do was to prepare what he calls, and one of the things we like about Dr. Rocha, he's got some good metaphors and athletic things and what have you, but he likes to use the term scorecard and dashboards and what have you. And in fact, he challenged us to create an accreditation response scorecard with the simple information of where we started in March two thousand nine, when we got the report from the Commission, where we are now as, if you will, March of two thousand ten, and where we will definitely be in October fifteenth of two thousand ten, when we provide our second follow-up report, to be followed by a visitation by Commission representatives likely in November. And you'll see at the bottom of that percentages in terms of where we've come. And there are obviously the five recommendations. So this is an approach that we are taking. The college has embraced this approach, and we are actively working with all the task teams, Academic Senate, Classified Senate Management Association, and others to achieve this goal of getting not only the college, getting the college where it needs to be relative to its accreditation activities. You've seen this one a thousand times, too, as we continue with the EMP planning process. The difference here is, again, Dr. Rocha, being a very goals and outcomes measured-oriented person, challenged us in this process to create very specific goals and outcomes measures, not only relative to the top ten priority actions, and those you might remember are the top ten from a percentage basis of what came out of the fifty-three recommendations that have thus far come out of our plan through the community input and the internal, external, environmental scan activities. But in that regard, as we go forward and we deal with these ten, and in reality, the additional forty-three, in whatever priority we place those, that each will have very specific goals and very measurable outcomes over a very reasonable period of time, if you will. And so we're now adding that to our process, and at a later date, we'll obviously report back more on where we are with the EMP. And then finally, Dr. Rocha has indicated that certainly one of his first key goals in the next six months is to, again, address our accreditation issues and to address the EMP. And so what you see here is a timeline that speaks to where we go with the educational master plan between now and December, with Board approval of the educational master plan in December. And then very specifically, the accreditation to-dos that need to get done between now and certainly October fifteenth, when the report is due, and then into December, as we work, we delve very specifically into recommendation number two, which has to do with SLOs and developing outcomes, not only for our courses, but also for our programs, our degrees, our majors, our areas of emphasis, et cetera. So this is our goal. You'll note at the top of the accreditation, the Identify Centers of Excellence. This is, again, as a result of leadership from Dr. Rocha of actually making that a big part of what we do. I will just say that Dr. Rocha has clearly hit the ground running, and his leadership has been very much appreciated and, I think, highly regarded by folks here. So I think I will leave it at that and certainly be willing to respond to any questions the Board may have, and certainly Dr. Rocha and others can contribute as well.
Dr. Rocha, any comments?
No, I just second what Bob said. I think I've done, Bob's been kind in his comments, but I've been doing helpership. You know, there's a lot of excellent work that's been done heretofore, so.
Questions? Dr. Mann?
Well, I will first of all make a comment. I was there yesterday. I thought the meeting went very well. Dr. Rocha is obviously very well-respected, and people were very excited. And how tactful he said what I said, because what I said was much franker than what he just said, which was the committee really didn't care about support for the faculty and staff. That's why it wasn't up there. But anyway, that was, but I do have a question. Would you go back to the first slide where it shows the college's mission? Now, in our board packet, we have the college's mission. It's not even close to the same thing. So, and I guess Dean Karros is the question on this? First of all, I was surprised when I saw this. So I asked Dr. Bradbury Wong about it, and she said, well, the approved mission is what's in your board packet. And what surprised me is there's nothing there about student access, which was, and I would like to know, I mean, I know I missed two months. Was that dropped at some point?
No, this is just the first statement from the mission statement. We couldn't fit it all on, so we went with the first statement. It's actually a paragraph.
Oh, okay.
And there's two other senses, and it's still there.
Okay. So what we have here, actually, in our binder, is really the, is the full mission statement.
Correct.
Okay. You know, it might be a good idea to put a little asterisk or something to show that.
Will do.
Because it doesn't say this is the first statement. It says this is the mission of.
We'll clarify that.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Baum?
I just want to praise Dr. Rocha for his leadership in rallying the campus community around this, and it was great to see and continue with a attaboy and encourage continued progress in this direction.
Well, I think thanks also to Deans Karros and Miller for their excellent work as well. So other comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Year-end report on college goals and strategic directions, discussion with possible action.
Yes, trustees, that's under O, and you will see quite a bit of information. We, given Dean Miller's previous report, we've done quite a bit of work on reviewing this and making sure that it norms and synchronizes in with the educational master plan process. So I picked this up as a living document. We're obviously open to any questions or elaborations, but I would propose it to you as our college goals and strategic directions for your consideration and approval.
Now, is, when you say this is a living document, I assume it's a, you mean a dynamic document that's going to be subject to change as we go forward?
Yes. Well, I think, you know, you'll see, you know, the first set is the end of the year, two thousand nine, ten, and then, you know, that goes into the ten and eleven. And I'm sure as, this is the acceptance at a point in time, but when we bring the final Ed Master Plan in December, that these will be shaped up still more.
Move approval.
There a second?
Second.
Questions? Mr. Baum?
Yeah, I just have a question. First off, I want to ensure before we act to approve this, the shared governance groups have had a chance to review, and it carries their endorsement as well, because this obviously cuts across a lot of areas of shared governance.
If I could respond, the Academic Senate has been very much involved with this, and we certainly endorse this.
That's good to know. The other question I had is, a neighbor who also happens to be a member of the faculty took me to coffee, actually last fall, to show me one of these reports and then show me all the things that were supposed to happen specifically in the basic skills area. And there were a number of things that said, we're going to do this type of activity and that type of activity and that type of activity that hadn't actually transpired. And she was expressing some frustration. I shouldn't presuppose maybe he was expressing frustration. But are we confident that the things we say we're going to do and adopt in these plans we're actually doing? Or how do we make sure that that's the case?
If I may, Dr. Rocha, based upon the work that was done last year for the accreditation and our new planning process and the new goals and outcome measures and the educational master plan, to be succinct about it, yes, we are confident that as we come to whatever we come to in the educational master plan, and as we establish, in this case, our goals for basic skills or developmental education, there will be very specific follow-through as agreed to by the Academic Senate, as agreed to by the institution. And I think going forward, you'll see some things. There is a lot here, and I think going forward, it's very possible that you will see less, but things that we know for a fact that we can actually get our arms around in a reasonable period of time.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, the one comment I would offer is that it seems like we have an amazing number of goals.
Yeah.
And typically, or seems to me that conventional wisdom is that you want to have a few goals and be able to achieve those and not five or six pages of it, whatever. It's figured out.
Well, this will all roll up to the Ed Master Plan, and the Ed Master Plan will put these into, I'd say, a handful of major goals, and these are the objectives underneath them. So we're, I think we're in sync on that.
We have a motion and a second. Are there further questions or comments? Advisory vote, please.
Just prior to voting, I'll say, I can't speak for the past AS Board. I know that this board that sits currently has not seen this document before. Having reviewed it, though, I think both Jamie and I are comfortable voting for it, and I look forward to associated students' involvement in this, given that it's a living document, as we say. So I'm comfortable voting yes for it.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is the college goals for, is that different from college goals and discussion? I guess since we just voted on.
We did those together. It looks like.
Yeah. O and P are actually kind of linked in a way. These are the college strategic plan goals. Again, I'll just speak briefly, and then this is before you for your consideration and approval. And as a segue from what the student trustee just mentioned, that, for example, this includes the strategic goals that include the goal on sustainability. So these are the strategic plan goals college-wide, which designate in the various major areas. Actually, there are, what, fourteen major areas that define the major strategic objectives and the strategic plan of the college as we move into two thousand and ten and eleven. Again, these are entirely operative. I've studied these with staff and consulted with other faculty and staff, and so I think it's a key foundational basis for moving forward to complete the Ed Master Plan.
Well, is your expectation to come out of this ultimately with a single set of goals for the college?
So in other words, what you just heard was the report on the oh-nine-ten. These are the, this is the strategic plan for ten-eleven, which characterizes as the initiatives. You'll see quite a bit of backup on there as far as the tactical objectives that would get these strategic initiatives achieved. What's left to do is, in the Ed Master Plan, to be clear about goals and objectives, we will bring to you, the Ed Master Plan, a very clear set of data. For example, if you were to take, well, goal number one- very clear set of data. For example, if you were to take, well, goal number one is actually operational in terms of doing program review, but take goal number two, improve the transition from high school to PCC, and from PCC to colleges and universities. That's part of the mission. In fact, that's part of the access mission that trustee Mann was referring to. What the work of the Ed master plan will actually be to put a data outcome on that and say, okay, here's where we are now in terms of the transition, high school students who are migrating to and coming to PCC by this benchmark, say in 2014, by this benchmark in 2020. This is how many students, you know, will be coming in. So that's what the Ed master plan does, is to boil that into four or five major objectives. We can measure and report to you consistently. So, and I, you know, open up to questions, and then Dean Miller to elaborate if you wish.
Are there questions?
Move adoption of the strategic plan for 2010, 2011.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion? Questions?
Well, the comment, I mean, I guess I would reiterate that I would hope we would come out of this ultimately with a single set of goals and objectives. And, I mean, some of the wording, like, for example, number one, "PCC uses evidence effectively in an ongoing and systematic cycle of evaluation to align its mission with its policies and practices." That strikes me as unusual to have something like that expressed as the goal.
Yeah.
So, but it's just, for this evening's purposes, I think just, we've made the comments, and you've assured us that ultimately, we're going to have a single document, and so.
Go ahead.
Further comments or questions?
I'd just like to add that there has been a strategic planning group led by Dean Colossus and members of the academic senate and others that have been engaged in this, and it is a new process. And it is one that we recognize needs some refinement, and particularly now based upon the new direction we're heading relative to the educational master plan and accreditation, what have you. So again, I would say that going forward, I think the board will see some crisper, more specific, more measurable goals and objectives. It's been an iterative process, an evolutionary process. So I think it's clear, I think Crystal would agree that we hear clearly what's going on here.
Right. And the way these are grouped, and what you just read is actually accreditation standard number one, and we've grouped these goals and initiatives under each of the accreditation standards. So that's not technically a goal, that's one of our first accreditation standard.
Okay, but the goal was, "College uses evidence to evaluate and transform programs and services to enhance and improve student learning." Slightly different phrasing of the accreditation standard, so it's, it just, it strikes me as being unusual to have something like that expressed as a goal for the college. The goal is, we want to enhance or improve student learning. Obviously, use evidence effectively or efficiently to achieve that goal, but that just strikes me as unusual to have something like that as a goal.
Well, it is, it is. But my sense is, and I'm speaking out of, you know, being, you know, just coming in on the process, my sense is that language found itself in there partly because of the accreditation effort.
That's correct.
So we're, the staff has been particularly sensitive to that language that ACCJC keeps on, you know, calling to our attention.
Right. And I don't mean to be critical of staff, because I do know from having gone to some of those meetings that Dean's Miller and Colossus have worked very hard and done a great job, so, are doing a great job, so.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay. Q. Public hearing and approval of contract for '29, '20, '20, '21, and '21, '12 between passing City College Police Officers Association and the passing Area Community College District, discussion with possible action. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, I would turn to Dean Engeldecker to brief us.
Well, this is a three-year agreement, and it provides for increases in benefits for '09-10 and '10-11, that's benefit premiums. It also has step in column and longevity increases for '10-11 and '09-10. And it has a provision which excludes layoffs and forced furloughs, except in the event of a majority of vote of the board of trustees declaring a physical emergency. Has a me-too provision, and as I said earlier, it's a three-year term.
Are there questions?
I think our process would be to open a public hearing and see if, and then...
I know, but let's have it explained first, and then we'll get to that. Are there questions of Dean Engeldecker? Okay. If not, we will now open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board with respect to this item, please come forward. Nobody appearing the motion, or the, except the motion to close the public hearing?
Move approval of the contract.
Second.
It been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. In favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries.
I just want to say, praise the bargaining unit at both the Police Officers Association and the administration for successfully reaching a long-term contract. That, I believe this takes us through 2012, correct?
That's correct.
So that's wonderful news, and I really appreciate the good faith effort on both the administration and the Police Officers Association to do this in the interest of the district.
Okay. Item R. Receive and set public hearing regarding initial bargaining proposal from the passing City College Faculty Association to the passing Area Community College District, discussion with possible action.
Yes, trustee Thompson, again, the purpose of this item is to formally and officially receive the proposal from the PCC FA. And again, I'll turn to the dean to brief us.
The Faculty Association has set forward a number of proposals that they would like to discuss, including, to your agreement, to keep in mind, these are bargaining positions and would need to be bargained. Also, it proposes to set August 4th as the time for receiving public comments regarding the initial proposal.
Are there questions? Yes, Mr. Baum?
I have a question. Just only in the date of the meeting for the public hearing, it's recommended for the next meeting, which is August 4th.
Right.
Is there any issue about the setting of that date at a time in the summer when faculty are not on campus, and should we consider a date for the hearing at a time when school is in session, just so that we can make sure that it is as accessible to as many interested parties as possible?
Mr. Marchena, any comments on that?
No, since this would be a Faculty Association issue.
Okay.
Well, I can certainly state, in my few years here, I'm trying to count all the people that have wished to address us during the public hearing, no matter when it's been, in the middle of the most crowded session of time. And in 32 years, I'm sure there's been one. I can't think of it at the moment, but if I think long and hard enough, I bet in 32 years, there must have been at least one. So the fact that it's happening in August, if it's going to slow the process down, I'd be in favor of boldly charging ahead and doing it on August 4th.
Mr. Dean Engeldecker, any?
Well, the Faculty Association is well aware of the notion that they've sent this to us at this time of the year, and that we would move forward to the public hearing. And they have presumably talked to their membership and have set forward the items they want to discuss. So I'd advise we go forward. But if you want to delay it, we can certainly do that.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? The recommended date by the administration is the 4th of August, our next meeting. What's your pleasure? Mr. Baum?
My question is just, have they been informed that we plan to agendize this for the, that is before the board who agendizes for the August 4th meeting?
Yes.
Okay. They have raised no objection to that?
That's correct.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Receive the initial bargaining proposal and designate the meeting of August 4th, 2010, as time for receiving public comment regarding the initial proposal by the association?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, we don't have to deal with item S. We've already dealt with that. Item T is future board meeting dates. August 4th is our next, August 18th. August 18th may potentially present an issue. I know that, I think both Mr. Baum and I are going to be away that event, unless you want to come to Glacier National Park and have a meeting.
Then we won't have a quorum. That really is an issue, since we probably won't have a quorum. Well, we'll have four people.
That's right, yeah. It's, so...
So I would recommend that we either schedule that for August 11th or August 25th, but cancel the meeting on the 18th.
That'd be my thought as well, one or the other, either one, so.
Well, ironically, I scheduled an event on the 11th so that I would miss the board meeting, so that I wouldn't miss the board meetings on the 4th and the 18th, so.
How about the 25th, Jim?
25th is probably fine.
Should we do it the 25th?
Okay. I move we change the meeting, cancel the meeting on the 18th, and schedule one for the 25th of August.
Okay, any, is there a second to that?
Checking here quickly.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, let me just quickly check something here. That's good. Okay, any discussion? Advisory vote? Advisory vote?
One's working on his calendar.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we've got September 1st as a meeting. One thing I wanted to raise the possibility of too, we've talked a lot about a board retreat that would also involve, obviously, the key staff people, key administration people. And just one date that's been mentioned as a possibility for that is Saturday, the 7th of August. I did have some emails with Dr. Fellow today. He will be available on that date. He returns from his tough assignment in Italy, I think, on the 2nd of August, and...
Yeah, I'm not available on the 7th.
You're not?
I'm out of area.
Okay. Alternative, well, first of all, I guess the question, we can't actually decide this evening, but is there any comment, any strong feeling against having a retreat and trying to find a date?
No, I think we should do that.
Okay. Can people email us, what about the, well, the 14th? I will not be available.
I will not be available.
Jeff will not be available. Well, can we ask people to email some dates, and maybe the administration can collect dates for availability, and I think the earlier we can schedule this, the better. The alternative, I guess, might be, what, July 31st? Would that be too early?
I'm not available.
On the 31st? Okay, all right. Labor Day weekend will not be a good time to do it, that's for sure. One date to look at would be August, what, 20, I'm sorry, 28th might be.
I can do that.
So, anyway, you'll send out emails and try to find a date to do that, and it certainly involves other officers, administration as well. So let us know your availability sometime in August or early September at the latest. Okay, anything else on future board meeting dates? Future agenda items? Yes, Mr. Baum?
I just want to put for the record, though, I think it would be appropriate for the board to work with the foundation to, it's not necessarily a meeting, but a reception to formally introduce our new president to the community, and to install him in a ceremonial way. As well as, the other item was, was supposed to be for announcements, but on Saturday, we will be formally dedicating the monument in recognition of the Chihuahua School that is on the grounds of the Community Education Center, and that's Saturday at 10:00 a.m. for those who are available to go.
Okay, let's return this briefly to the idea of a campus and community reception for Dr. Rocha. With Wednesday, August 4th, we started our, had that at 5:30, and started a meeting at 6:30, something like that. That will work. Okay, people shaking their heads, no.
No, I was going to suggest that Dr. Rocha get back to us with some dates, that people that are important to him can come, and perhaps when campus is back in session, where faculty and students could be around to participate as well.
See people shaking their heads no for that 4th of August anyway, so. Any future agenda items? I believe we are prepared to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? All right.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
We are adjourned, thank you.